First order of business, I'll ask Dan to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can hear me at home. There we go. Thank you. Thank you Chairman Young, members of the school committee. Tonight, we have two very exciting items to recognize. I will begin by calling Principal Heather Tucker and our student Jacob Gunnison up to the table while they are getting up there. They are here tonight to talk about the fact that Jacob has been selected as Middleborough's Project 351 Ambassador. The Project 351 program engages eighth grade ambassadors from each of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts in a 12-month program of service, learning, leadership development, and civic engagement. This program was established under Governor DeVal Patrick and has been a program that's alive and well. Every year, a new ambassador is selected with community service projects that are completed each year. The educators at the Nichols Middle School have selected ambassadors year after year who demonstrate an exemplary ethic of service and values of kindness, compassion, humility, and gratitude. Project 351 places a special premium on unsung heroes and quiet leaders within the rich diversity of the Commonwealth. I was looking at the 351 website tonight to talk a little bit with our crowd at home and members of the school committee about, a little bit more about what Project 351 is. And what it really is, is a program that brings students together who are united for a year of leadership and service. These ambassadors transform our communities, they elevate kindness, they advance social justice, and gain courage, compassion, and the capabilities to lead change. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Principal Heather Tucker and welcome our student Jacob Gunnison.
Thank you so much for having us here. We are community, we're excited that Jacob has been selected as our student for our community and civic engagement. And the ambassadors have a pretty robust year that Jacob is about to embark on, participating in leadership academies to prepare for his journey as a service leader. And they have, he'll talk just in a second, but I really wanted to talk about who Jacob is as a student at Nichols Middle School. So there is a selection process where we reach out to the faculty to see if there's a student that is identified as a potential as an ambassador. And I have to say, the email about Jacob came in pretty quickly. As somebody who, his seventh grade team thought absolutely should have this with the follow-up and backing of his current eighth grade team. And just to talk a little bit about Jacob as his, as the way he embodies that inclusivity, that gratitude, that humility. He is somebody who has won our War Award. That's an award that's given out by clusters over, you know, the different months of the school year. So he has been a World Award recipient. You know, he greets his teachers with a smile, he thanks them at the end of each class. He offers positive words of support to his, you know, fellow students if they're having a bad day. He really is just kind to others. And as you say, oh, Jacob's our student. Oh my gosh, he's just the best kid. Oh my gosh, he's such a good guy. Oh wow, he works so hard in school. He is just such a sweetheart. And, you know, he participates in sports, maintains great grades, he exceeds teachers' expectations. He accepts challenge with enthusiasm, and that's not always easy. And he really just stands out as a young man in the Nichols community. And we are truly proud that you have been selected as our ambassador for Project 351.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Gunnison, and I am excited to be chosen as the Project 351 Ambassador. I'm looking forward to participating in service projects like Cradle to Crayons this spring. And that will definitely help the community, which I'm very excited for. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Tucker and my teachers for nominating me. Thank you for your time.
So I have a certificate here for us to present to Jacob, if you may. Just before you come on up, any questions before we take the call?
Jacob, I have been on this committee 10 years now. I have seen a lot of Project 351 students come. Always pleased to have them. And I would tell you from my experience...
I am also pleased to see what they become when they come to the high school and go beyond. I have a very close friend who is a Project 351, who was Project 351 for us six years ago. This is his first year at Boston College Law School. I've seen a lot of them go on and get graduate degrees and do a lot of amazing things here in this, not in this building, in the old building primarily, but here at the high school. So you have big shoes to fill. And I've also seen them become a member of this table as the student rep to the school committee. And so I'll tell you that from what I've learned from 351 students, knowing what you go through, it is an opportunity to learn how to lead. And you'll, I think you'll find that you continue that through high school and into college. And so looking forward to amazing things from you.
Come on up. Tonight, I want to recognize, there's a group of you here to recognize our Unified Sports here in Middleborough. And when I say Unified Sports, that ranges from sports teams to Unified PE, physical education opportunities here in our buildings. And tonight, Middleborough High School is being identified as a Special Olympics Unified Champion School. Not for the first time, for the second time. In order to qualify as a Special Olympics Unified Champion School, you must demonstrate an inclusive school climate and exude a sense of collaboration, engagement, and respect for all members of the student body and staff. Not only has Middleborough High School earned this designation, but is also one out of 20 Massachusetts high schools to receive a national banner recognition. In order to receive this recognition, schools must demonstrate a commitment to inclusion by meeting 10 national standards. The primary activities within these standards include Unified Sports, Inclusive Youth Leadership, and Whole School Engagement. Now, I will share, because I have been a wild fan of the Unified Sports program since its inception. When you go to a Unified Sports event, it is much like any other varsity athletic event that you will see in our district. I have seen the band come and support our students, our cheerleaders will come and support the students, our faculty, our fellow students. Inclusion, when you hear people talk about this concept, it can become a box to check. At Middleborough High School, and in the, and the Middleborough Public Schools more generally, it is woven into the fabric of who we are. This is not something that is done for any other reason than what you see in this community is a community that chooses to include. So what I'd like to do at this time is call up Ryan Sylvia, our Athletic Director. He has a team with him, I believe Assistant Principal Andy Dizel. He's also got, are you bringing everybody up, Ryan? Alicia Lane. Alicia Lane is our coach for track. Andy Dizel is our coach for basketball. James Morocco is here, along with Jeanne Williams, who head up our PE efforts at the schools. And they're here to talk to you a little bit about what it's been like here in Middleborough. While they're getting set up, I'll give a special shout out. I see a lot of friends in the audience tonight. And I'm excited to not just see our students, but the faculty and staff who have long supported this effort. People like Glenda Spillane, Jody Iscolas, Donna Foley, Jennifer Healy, Paul Branigan. I see you all out there, honestly. And, you know, want to take a minute to say thank you and recognize the tremendous effort that's, that's gone into this initiative for the first three-year period, and now we're entering a second three-year period with this honor. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ryan Sylvia, and you can tell us a little bit more.
Chairman Young and the school committee for having us tonight. Shout out and thank you to all of our Unified Student Athletes and partners that are down there. Give a little round of applause. I asked a couple of coaches to come up in case people have questions, but really, this is really a program at Middleborough High School that we, I came to the school committee, I think, seven years ago and asked if we could get this going. And it's been a while since then. It's probably one of the things I'm most proud of at Middleborough since I've been here. Unified, Unified Sports, I think epitomizes educational athletics to me. It's exactly what we want to be teaching. If we can get all of our student athletes in Middleborough to understand the importance of inclusion and why this is so important to something bigger than themselves, and also just get the entire school involved, then I think we've done our job with our student athletes. And I think we've come a long way in that way. This program has 53 participants, 25 partners, so it's a, it's a student, it's an athlete-partner kind of ratio, one to one. And it allows them to work with, work with student athletes with intellectual disabilities and also interact in what we try to make as close to a varsity athletic experience as we possibly can. We have a little video that I'll ask to put on at the end that just kind of summarizes some highlights that over the past few years. But I'll give you kind of the summary of what we had to do to become a Unified Champion School. There's the standards that Superintendent Lyons mentioned. We have to offer multiple sports, so we make sure that we offer Unified Track and Field and Unified Basketball at the high school. We also have to show growth. And so that's something that we're going to try to continue to do. And in this past year, we kind of piloted a Unified Basketball program in March at the middle school, which is huge. And I'd love to see that program grow as well. Obviously, there's a lot of factors that play into that. We make sure that we mirror what we do with our varsity teams at the high school. So our Unified Student Athletes get recognized in the same way. If they play and finish the season in good standing, they get a varsity player, they get recognized with their picture up on stage at the awards night. If they choose to have a banquet, they do that as well. We have to have an adult leader of each program that has training working with Unified Student Athletes. So we make sure that training happens. I'll give a shout out to the coaches and teachers. Two of them aren't right here. Alicia Lane, our Unified Track and Field Coach, James Morocco. This is another area where we showed growth. James Morocco teaches our Unified PE elective, which does the same thing as Unified Sports. We partner our special education students with mainstream students in physical education and normal physical education class that happens every day, or in the, as much as all other physical education classes happen in the schedule. And then also Coach Dizel, I didn't make him come up here, but our Unified Basketball Coach, he's been with us since the start and has been great. So he's here. And then also Jeanne Williams, our adaptive physical education teacher is here, who works with a lot of these students. There's, there's actually, I'm going to kind of go off topic here a little bit, but there's too many people to thank that go into making this program happen. I'm looking at Donna Foley right then in the front, Jody Iscolas, Glenda Spillane. If there's anybody I'm missing, I apologize, but there are Paula Magnasco and her nursing staff to make sure students that need those services during their practices and games. She makes sure that they're there, and the entire nursing staff is always willing to jump in and step in as needed. So I did those thank yous kind of in the middle. But some of the other things we needed to do, and I'm not going to go through every standard, but we have to have other inclusive youth leadership. So we have best buddies, which kind of supplements what we do with Unified Sports and Unified PE. We've talked about whole school engagement activities, probably the two biggest ones. This is a requirement for our Champion School status is that we have, we engage our entire school community in Unified. And the two biggest ones are probably our Unified Pep Rally, which we built right into our Thanksgiving Pep Rally this year. And you'll see a little clip of that where we unveiled the banner that we received from Special Olympics. And the one that I'm really proud of is in the spring every year, since our new facility opened, Special Olympics and the MIA asked us to host the sectional track meet, which is the largest, the largest Unified Track and Field meet in the state from a sectional standpoint. And I think we had 18 schools here last year. And our entire spring athletic program was asked to volunteer. So you see students wearing the pink and purple choose to include Special Olympics t-shirts. That's what they get, is the t-shirt for volunteering. We had, you know, somewhere in the range of 200 or 300 volunteers to help us run that program, and anybody else in the school that wanted to volunteer that day. And so we'll be hopefully doing that again this spring. I know Mr. Branigan and I are working on hosting the Unified Bochi here in Middleborough this year. And so, you know, the other piece is, is the last standard is that you have support from your administration in the sense that these are programs that do cost money, and we have to, you know, work on, work with special education and school committee to make sure we have support, which is why we're here. And we always have had that. And we thank you for that, and our students and families thank you for that. And we do the best we can to make, make all these programs work. So that's really a summary. I could probably go on and on. I can't wait to see these programs grow. I'm proud of our student athletes, our coaches, and our district for kind of leading the way in this sense with the one of only 20 schools. I think when we started, we had, there was somewhere in the range of 30 schools participating in Unified Basketball. And now they're up to almost just under 140, 130-something. So it's growing. I serve on a committee at the State Association Ad Hoc Committee for Unified Sports, and I've been kind of pushing it a little bit with our, within our eleven-team league to try to get more schools involved. And so I won't, I won't talk anymore. Obviously, I could keep going on and on about it. I can kind of open it if anyone has questions before we just show the short video clip. All right, I think if there are any questions, then they could just, really kind of a short highlight reel. And it's a clip of the woman from Special Olympics that came to, her name escapes me right now, but she was great. She attended our pep rally, and she presented us with our Champion Schools banner.
Ladies and gentlemen, Special Olympics Massachusetts, and I couldn't be more thrilled to be here today. I've been traveling the state celebrating schools that are great. And you guys are great. So what is the national banner? You guys, it's the highest level achievement within the Unified Champion School movement. Your school is receiving this honor as a result of meeting 10 national standards of excellence in the areas of inclusion, advocacy, and respect. The primary activities include Special Olympics Unified Sports, like these great teams right here. Inclusive Youth Leadership, like this student council. And this right here, Whole School Engagement Pep Rally is like this. Fantastic. You guys, I don't know if you know this, but this is how special you are. You are among only 22 schools in the state of Massachusetts with this distinction, and one of 205 schools with this recognition in the nation. This is a really deal because there are over 6,500 schools in the nation. You have built a solid foundation and have created this environment here at your school. You are doing the work in great ways, but it didn't just happen by itself. We would like to thank many people, but most of all, you, the students, being the you in Unified. I'd like to also thank some special people here that are supporting you and leading the way. Your UCAS liaison, Jennifer Healy, your Athletic Director, Ryan Sylvia, your Principal, Paul Branigan, your Unified Basketball Coach, Diesel, your Athletic Field Coach, Alicia Lane, Superintendent Caroline Lyons, King Aragon, Jody Iscolas, Glenda Spillane, Donna Foley, Dylan Crowley, Val Ruffo, Gray Ulrich, Gina News, Kelsey Stuck, Robin Maxwell, Emily Calano, Paul Metnase, and nursing staff. There's so many people that are helping you lead the way in social inclusion. Let's go around here, applause, all of them. Before I hand the call to this wonderful pep rally into the next phase of it and unveiling the national banner, I just wanted to remind you all, this was, this award is not just for all the athletes and partners who are on your Unified Sports team, but it's for all of you here today. You epitomize the means to play and live Unified. You choose to respect everyone at your school. You choose to foster new friendships with others who are different than you. Your school has shown impressive determination and in helping us move forward for creating a truly unified generation of young people who embrace differences and lead social change. That is a really big deal. Thank you for making the world a more accepting place for all. All right, if I could please have a senior outlet, Abby, now here with me to help unveil the banner. Oh, there you go. Fantastic. If I can get the band, give me a drum roll, please. I am so excited to unveil Marlboro High School 2023-24 National Banner. One, two, three, hit it!
Do I have any questions? I did want to say something, Ryan, you came to us seven minutes ago. I happen to be on that committee. I couldn't agree more. In the sense of, of all the things that I've done on this committee to watch these games and watch these kids participate has been one of the more fantastic things. I would say to any member of the community, to come into this building in the afternoon and watch a basketball game or watch Unified Track Meet or watch whatever sport is truly phenomenal. And it's made phenomenal by the staff that helps and works here, and the students that come, and everyone that participates, and the students that come. And so you guys are fantastic. And I'm glad that school gets recognized, but more importantly, that you all get recognized for the hard work that you do. Because just like the football team that goes out there and wears the uniform, you guys wear the uniforms and represent the Ohio, and we should be very, very proud.
Does anyone wish to speak on something that I might suggest? So you know what I'm wrong? Does anyone have a question? Have anyone wish to bring up?
So it's a little late though, but Festival is coming to MHS on March 2nd, I believe. Festival is an amazing program where a bunch of different drama departments compete. And not only that, it is an opportunity for STW students to meet like-minded, like-minded, excuse me, individuals and other students who also enjoy the arts. And it's amazing. We won in 2003, I believe. And I can't wait to have all, all of that opportunity for those, for those students to show off our new school and be proud of, of the new facilities that we have.
Excellent. Anyone else have anything?
We'll need all the volunteers.
Yeah, we'll need, it will need volunteers, yes.
Anybody else have anything they wish to bring up? With that, I'll turn it over to our student rep.
All right, let me start with the kindergarten. About two weeks ago, we had a couple of students from the high school that were taking a storytelling class, go to the MAC and read stories that they actually worked on from their class, and presented to the kindergarteners. Also, the fire department also visited the kindergarten, gave an engaging presentation on fire safety, which I remember also from kindergarten, still to this day taking. Then moving to the MKG, they were also visited by the fire department for a presentation, but also the Middleborough Gas Electric gave a presentation for grades third to fifth, for more in-depth presentation. Also, they plan on starting their holiday season tomorrow night with a Grinch Family Night put on by the PTA. It'll be held from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Also, following the seasonal theme, they plan on having a spirit week the week before Halloween. Also, following the seasonal theme, they plan on having a spirit week the week before Halloween, geez, Christmas. And the other elementary school, they're also starting the December off with a ugly sweater party sponsored by the PTA. Since the beginning of the year, I remember them getting the piece of equipment for their playground, and they continue to strive to get more equipment for that playground to this day. And they tried to do this through this party. And all proceeds will be going to the playground. Also, the seasonal school holiday shop will be open the 12th and the 13th from 4:45 to 5:30, as well as it running from 5:30 to 7:00 on the 14th. And this is just for any students to come buy gifts, for any family members they would like to, any friends, just cheaper scholastic gifts that kids can buy. Also, student report cards have come out for the HUB, MKG and kindergarten as of today. Moving to the middle school, they are also having a PTA-sponsored party. It's the winter carnival, which I also remember partaking in. Carnival is where people play games, including dodgeball, basketball, and other games. They also be able to get face painted, glitter tattoos, and even be able to use a photo booth. And it all comes with the price of ticket, so there's no extra additional prices, except for drinks. Grades also close on next Monday, and report cards will be coming out on Tuesday, the 19th for the middle school. The high school, I'm really grateful to be part of that Unified team. We ended the season off great with the pep rally, ended all fall sports with pep rally. Getting into that, all winter sports are going to be starting up, including swim meets, boys and girls basketball games, winter track meets, wrestling matches, just name a few. And also, the high school has started the food drive and toy drive, which is a great, great drive to get involved in. They have ornaments in the front office colored with your class color that you can grab at any time during the day with a age and, well, as a child with an age, an ornament that you can grab to get a gift for them. And it's really appreciated, and it's just to fit with the giving time of Christmas. Thank you, guys.
Of course. Do you have any questions for call? We appreciate a call.
Thank you.
The union presidents are not here tonight, so I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Okay, so I have four items to address this evening. I'll start with the first, which is the school calendar as proposed for the 24-25 school year. Right now, there are four options to consider that went into the Dropbox. This year is a little unusual because of voting, so I'll walk through each model. And what I would suggest is, these are four options, is kind of a lot, but I think it's helpful for you to have all the ways to do this. And then we could come back together and talk after today as well. It's certainly not something that I am expecting a decision on this evening. A couple of notes about all four models. You have to have 180 school days, and there are certain components that are set by the contract. There are four full-day professional development days, those are shaded in green. And then there are six PD early release days, those are shaded in blue. In addition, you'll see other dates on here, like MHS graduation, which is always the first Saturday of June. New teacher orientation, that process is on here. I would also note that students in grades, you know, K through, or 1 through 12, start on one day. K will often start on the following day or, you know, a subsequent day. And then pre-K, another subsequent day. So you'll have to, those shades are not in yet, so we could talk about that as to where they go. But I just note that because it's not that all grades start on the same day, and I think that's important to note. A couple of other pieces. Last year when I presented models, we talked about whether those early release days were best served on a Friday or another day. I think the parent community has been pretty clear about liking them on the Friday. And, you know, the feedback is still the same that I gave you last year. I think the Friday leading into a holiday period can be a little challenging for staff. They are often as tired as the students. But it does work well for families, and I think you have to counterbalance that and guide me on how you want to proceed. I know this year, the feedback I received on November 1st was really positive. The day after Halloween, using that day as a full-day PD seemed to be very positive. This year will have to be different because of voting. So let me talk a little bit about voting. We already know that on November 5th, that day is shaded in green. That is an election day, so that's the presidential election, actually. So that, we can talk about this, but school has traditionally been closed on a voting day. And the reason that is the case is because we have multiple schools that are voting sites. There's a safety and security component. And there's also just kind of what happens with the parking lot with voting. So while it is not mandatory that you close for a voting day, I think it is prudent to close so that you are really managing not just the safety of the students, but the promotion of big, strong turnout for voting. So that's November 5th, and we got word, I think that was just earlier today.
It happened on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, yesterday. That we know for sure that there's also going to be voting on Tuesday, September 3rd.
That's the mass primary.
And that is the day after Labor Day. So that makes this calendar unique because we know that that day cannot be a day that school opens. So option one is an after-Labor Day start, which would include two professional development days on the 3rd and the 4th, opening for students on the 5th, that Thursday. Okay, that's option one. That gets the students out, the last day of school would be June 25th. And that doesn't include any snow days, so that would be option one. Option two would start the professional development days on August 26th and 27th, those first two days. The first student day would be August 28th, which is before Labor Day. So students would return on the 28th, and then that Monday and Tuesday would be off first for Labor Day and then for the professional development day. This option, option two, has students getting out on Monday, June 16th. Do keep in mind that June 19th is Juneteenth, a June holiday. So that's why you see that shaded in orange, okay? So that's option two. Option three is before Labor Day for staff. So that would bring, similar to the last model, that would bring professional development for staff back on the 28th and 29th of August with the school opening on the 4th. That third professional development day would be on Tuesday, the 3rd. And then school would open on the 4th. That would get students, that would be, the 180th day would be Friday, June 20th. And again, these are all without any snow days, or inclement weather days, I should say. There's not always snow. And then last is option four, which includes an after-Labor Day start. So again, it would be a start on the 4th. And this also doesn't include Good Friday. This has been another topic in previous years about whether or not that day is going to be a holiday or not. Okay, and I think that's what I wanted to share about all four options. The school calendar is a decision that is set by the school committee. What questions do you have for me and how can I help facilitate this process?
The first question I have is, can we put the calendars on the website?
Yes, I will.
For people to view.
Yes, I will put all four options so that hopefully this is clear, it is color-coded. So hopefully that will be clear, and that way, all families and people watching at home can log, you know, log onto our website and take a look.
The pieces that I'd like the committee to know, because I think they're important, is while the 25th would be a late day, the 25th only allows three days for snow. Okay? Contractually, we can't go into the 1st of July. So fourth snow day starts to lose vacation. Because the rest of the days are taken up. So the only place that you can add it on is a vacation day. So that's an important piece to keep in mind, too.
Of 2025, there's no June 20th, so June 30th is actually the Monday of June, so my...
Oh, I see, yes. Thank you for that, the calendar, the way the calendar is printed, it doesn't say the 20th at all.
So the option one would have the last day, I believe, on 6/24, which would technically give four potential days if necessary. Not three, but it's still cutting it off close, in my opinion.
Well, and there's another point, if I may. When you get to the end of June, there are many contracts in the district that require employees to work five days after the close of the school year. And those contracts expire on June 30th. So if school is not out until June 26th or 27th, there are no longer five workdays beyond the end of the school year.
Yep.
It's not an insurmountable thing, but I think it's important to understand that that's a component. That's obviously not teachers, but there are people who have that in their contract where that would require some extra maneuvering.
Is it the type of thing that if we have an agreement today that we feel that that's not enough of an end-of-year buffer, that we can discard one of these options before they're posted and just say, "This one doesn't make any sense to us and not worth putting out that many options if we've already decided we don't want one?"
That's right.
Yep, I think that's, I defer to the committee on that. I'll present whatever options you think are appropriate to put up and continue the conversation. I think either way, this would be appropriate to talk at the next meeting so that you also have time to talk to the community and, you know, collect your feedback so that, you know, we can talk about it again at next meeting, which I believe is the 21st of December.
Other questions, other comments?
So on options three and four, just to check for August of 2024, with the PD days being the 28th and 29th. But, and then again, on the 3rd, because of election and the students returning on the 4th, the 30th would be a day off for the teachers?
Correct. The 30th, which is the Friday leading into Labor Day, in all the models are not, they are not teacher days and they are not student days.
I accept option two, correct? Because option two has everybody coming back on the 28th.
Right, I'm sorry, you're correct. Option two would have all students in session for the 30th. We've done it both, historically, we've done that both ways. We've had students in session for that Friday before Labor Day, and we've also had years where, you know, the district was open, but there wasn't either faculty or students.
And there's not a contractual piece on the Friday before Labor?
Nope.
Right, it's just clarifying that it isn't, they are expected to be there, that anything before the first official day of school, the teachers would only be there if it was flagged as a PD day.
Correct.
Okay.
So my question is, June 19th, we do give that day off.
Yes, June 19th is a holiday.
It's a holiday, and so therefore we give that day, it just...
It's a holiday for everybody.
Option three, yeah, so option three just seems really awkward to me that you have, you know, 16th, 17th, 18th day off, half-day on the 20th.
Which could be solved by not having a day off on the 18th of April for Good Friday, which is what is different.
Which is what option four is, and that's why I like option four.
Yep.
I actually like option four the best in this particular instance. I don't think there's anything wrong inherently with option two, it just starts, you know, for... I'm just thinking of the students being like, "Oh, I have to go, I have to go in on August."
And teachers do, yeah.
So that's why I like option four a lot better. I would say if we could just post option two and option four.
Agreed. I have the same feeling personally.
Chris, do you have a thought?
I'd like to keep option three in there just until we get to, you know, talk to the community, get more people's ideas. Theoretically, in certain districts, when there is a lot of snow, they then vote to use Good Friday as a day of school. So I just think we should keep that as an option.
I, however, strongly feel that we should not be taking a religious day as a holiday on our official school calendar. It personally does not feel appropriate to be doing so.
So it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it doesn't sound like option one is, makes sense to everybody. So we should dump option one.
Okay.
There seems to be two and four, and I think I agree with Chris. I think we can put out option three just to have a part of a conversation. Whether or not what it turns into, there can be changes to those days. But I think we should just go with those three options. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about option two? And this may be a question that Bran might be better suited to answer, but with high school graduation being, technically, it's kind of late in June because it's the first Saturday, which happens to be the 7th. Is that, if the seniors were in class through the end of May and then graduated on the 7th, and there was only another real week of school before everybody was out, does that give the teachers enough of a buffer between wrapping everything up for the seniors and wrapping everything else up for the rest of the students at the high school level before school is out for the year?
And Bran is shaking his head yes. But can I also point out to everybody that I think is very important, that a full week of June gives Bran a completely another day to have a brand production on. So he usually loses Monday because it's Memorial Day when it's early. But this gives him another whole Monday to have another presentation on. So I just wanted to point that out, because I know he'll enjoy that.
So you feel it would be enough time to transition?
And Bran, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but knowing what you have to go through and knowing where seniors are, and for example, knowing what grades determine, for example, rank in class and everything like that, it's a pretty quick turnaround for end-of-finals for seniors to grades being distributed back to you relatively quickly.
So it's really focused on the final aspect or a project or some kind, but the window for grade 12 is really, really close, it's tight.
But I think that it's, I know the window for grade 12 is really tight all the time. It's more the amount of time after they've just gone through that craziness for all the seniors to then have to get everything done for the rest of the grades before the end of the year. And is there kind of enough time between finishing everything up, participating in all the senior activities? And, because so many of the teachers like to be involved in those, does it give them enough time to then turn around everything else and get finals in and everything else that they need to do?
Yeah, so what we would do is, we always take the school calendar and then whatever is beside it, and then we then go and start making our own calendar based upon that of when deadlines would be for final grades, we do report card distribution and all of that. So we would project that from the summer into the school year ahead.
Any other questions, love? Would now are three pieces.
No, I mean, the only other thing that I was thinking of is if you look at option two, when you don't give the Good Friday as a day off, that puts the potential last day of school on the Friday before, which is Friday, the 13th, and you're not doing a half-day after a weekend, provided there's no snow days. So if we were going to give four options, I would propose an option two before Labor Day start and no Good Friday, so that would become the fourth option. So the only difference between option four and three is the Good Friday, and the only option between, difference between option two and the proposed other option would be no Good Friday.
Okay.
Actually, there's one more thing I wanted to point out. Typically, the professional development days, there are two at the beginning of the year, one usually around November, and then one later in the year. This, you'll see in none of these, there's no March. We've typically picked on March because it's a long month. The feedback we got from staff this year and administration through the leadership team is that a full day of professional development is something that I think our educators want to use as the beginning of the year and hit the ground running. So if you give them something new in March, you know, that's not always something they feel they can take and run into many months of instruction. So being mindful of that, that's one of the reasons you see... many months of instruction. So being mindful of that, that's one of the reasons you see the additional day at the beginning of the year. It's, again, historically, it's been done both ways. I've seen three days at the beginning of the year and then sprinkled throughout. This calendar does not propose any full day professional development days after Election Day in November. So just to note a difference between last year's drafts and this year's as an example. So with that, I'll, do you want me to rename them new option one, two, and three, just to avoid confusion?
That would be great.
So that no one's looking for the one that doesn't make sense?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's awesome.
Just keep the secondary descriptions the same so that we can remember which ones we liked beforehand.
Yeah.
Will do. I'll.
And are we going, are we going forward with an, with an option for, with the option for that Jess provided?
Would you like, would you like an option, would you like the option for?
That, that's up. I, I don't mind doing it, but you know, I, I appreciate, I would rather have three options than four personally, but if it's up to the committee.
Well, I mean, we could still look at the options altogether and make changes. We could still, for example, pick option three and make changes to option three.
Right.
Or pick one of them and, I, I think.
I mean, basically, we're looking at two options and then just deciding.
When the school begins, when it's gonna end, and sort of just seeing middle somewhat.
And I just have a logistical question as to how these are posted. When you post them, people just are able to look at them. There's no comment section or anything?
Correct. This would just be posted on our website.
Right, alright.
And people can comment the same way. They can send notes to us or they can,
Absolutely.
Send notes to the superintendent and forward them to us.
Alright.
Does anyone in the audience have a question about the, the options for their calendar? With that, we'll post three, rename one, two, and three. And this doesn't, I mean, we've had at times when we were building this high school, it took us a while to do the final option. But we usually try to do this by, you know, early January so people have some knowledge, you know, with six months, people can plan vacations and everything like that, so I think that's important.
If I remember correctly, it's, it's decided, but with the ability that if something changes, that there is the ability to amend it? Cause we had to do that before because of.
Yeah, we have to. For example, you know, there have been, not when I've been on the school committee, thankfully. But there have been, you know, there have been times when you've had eight or nine snow days. And you have to make up eight or nine snow days. And I think for most of the time, you'll see, you can't, you can't make it with eight or nine snow days, so you have to do something else. And whether that's having a conversation with the union about making some changes, for example, to professional development days or whatever, but it, it just, what, whatever has to happen, has to happen. Cause you have to hit the one eighty. Very rarely do, does the state allow the one eighty not to take place. Sometimes it happens, like in, think of, for example, I think Worcester, when the tornadoes hit, if you recall, didn't have to go through the one eighty. Some, some things like that occur. But when the blizzard of, you know, seventy-eight hit, everyone had to hit the one eighty still on that day, so, you know, these are things that don't change.
And just to officially put it on record, I do work the elections and I have seen the, the way people navigate through the building. And I will say that in this building for the high school, especially in November, if it's very cold, it's very difficult for some of the elderly residents or those who are, you know, in wheelchairs or on crutches or something like that, to navigate from the parking to the gym entrance. And a lot of times they do come in the main doors and at least navigate through the hallway. So to me, that increases the security concern of, of people being even more present in the building. And even in the, the middle school with it having such a limited parking lot, having enough space for people to park close enough to easily get up to those rear doors in is, is a definite consideration for the community. So I do fully support the continuing to do the full PD days on those election days. I just think it's a safer way to, to go for both those people trying to vote and for the building's security.
And I'll also say that, you know, that there's now an election official from Middleborough. It used to be the town clerk, but the decision where to hold it is up to them. Because, for example, we have the rotunda here. The rotunda is closer to a parking space, different parking spaces and stuff like that. So it doesn't have to be held in the gym. It's up to them to decide where they wanna hold it, so I think that's important too.
Yeah, except it's like four districts and they can't all fit in the rotunda.
No, I understand. That's difficult.
Yep. Okay, so I will, with your permission, I will keep this on the agenda for next meeting. I'll come back with the options that we can talk about then. And I'll move on to the next item. The next item, which I referenced in the flash last Friday, is regarding the Reed's Collaborative. And this is something I'll be looking for action from the committee this evening. So as of November sixteenth, the Reed's Board of Directors, of which I am a member, had a meeting and by majority vote, ultimately, actually by unanimous vote, voted to support the addition of two new members to the Reed's Collaborative. That is the Whitman Hansen Regional School District and the Brockton Public Schools. Now that the Board of Directors has voted to offer that membership, it has to go through the school committees, each individual member's school committee. This motion will only pass if two-thirds of all of the school committees, so not two-thirds of this committee, but two-thirds of all of the committees have to vote to approve this action for it to go forward. So tonight I'll be asking you, do you want to approve this decision or do you not? And I can talk a little bit about, about membership in general at, at the Reed's Collaborative. What I can, what I can share is that both school districts already send children to the Reed's Collaborative. By becoming a member of the collaborative, they do get a discounted rate. Chairman Young and I were talking about this, which would reduce revenue, right? If you were paying, you know, a set rate and you're getting a twenty percent discount for sake of argument, you will now lose that income. None of this would happen until July first, so it wouldn't impact this year's budget. But it has the potential to impact next year's budget, depending on how many seats each member is already maintaining. I will also tell you that enrollment is down at the Reed's Collaborative. So whether the rate is discounted or not discounted, it's better to have those seats filled even at the discounted rate than have them sit vacant. I will also say, what's the, you know, I think the natural question is what's the benefit, what's the con? The benefit of having additional members is additional assistance to do the committee work. So it's not just the Board of Directors. There's a personnel committee. There's a negotiations committee. The collaborative is largely run by the member districts. So it's other versions of me that are doing the, the administrative work of the district. I mean, they have, they have employees, but together, you have to make decisions together, much like this board. So that would shoulder the burden. By inviting additional member districts into the membership, it also creates a web of networking. So for example, when Director Healy has a, a need for a specific program, one of the things she'll do is already go to other member districts and ask about what programs are in their district, are in their, within their borders. Having a, a town like Brockton, having a city like Brockton at the table very much increases the number of networking opportunities and placement options and resources. It, it doesn't mean that you can just go to, you know, Brockton Public Schools, and that's not really what I'm suggesting. But it certainly does broaden the pot from which to select from. So that is a benefit. The drawback and the biggest one is absolutely the lost revenue for discounted rates and the potential for seats to be taken up. So there's no limit. The new members do not receive any, any fewer seats than, than Middleborough as a sitting member. So there's no cap. And arguably, Middle, you know, Middleborough is a much smaller district than Brockton, for example. So one of the questions is, well, what happens if those seats become full? Will Middleborough students now not have a seat? Will they not be able to get into programming? What I can tell you is when, whenever we've had a need for placement, the collaborative is very good at finding spots and/or hiring additional staff in order to make room at that table. So I, I don't know if that's going to present itself. I don't know that, you know, so many more referrals will come one way or the other, but it's something that you should consider before you cast your vote this evening. So with that, I think that's, I think that's everything. Is there, what questions do you have for me or what can I answer for you about this?
Is there the potential that those, the two new districts, by becoming members, will by placing, by having the, the, being part of the collaborative, be more inclined to place more students? Like, does that seem to be a trend that happens? So if a new district comes on, then they're maybe more likely to place students because of the discounted rate, which means kind of counteracts the fact that each student is coming with a little less money because there's more students coming.
Yeah. Arguably, if you, I, I can just use Middleborough as an example. We tend to overwhelmingly place students in collaboratives where we are a member. It is not exclusively done because you have to match the students' needs to the placement. So that works as long as you have a child with that given need. If you don't have, for example, the DHH program. Okay, it's a very, very specific, deaf and hard of hearing is a very, very specific avenue. If I don't have a student with that need, I'm not going to be able to place a student in the program. Okay, but, so is the discount enough to lure the business is the real question? Maybe, but, but I can't, I can't for sure tell you that's going to drive in more or not.
I think one of the big things to remember is this, even for Middleborough, our choice is always not to place out of district if we can do something in district. So for example, if we have a number of kids that have a special need, that makes sense to have an, a, a classroom in Middleborough, we run it in Middleborough, if it makes sense. Children are appropriately the same age, appropriately the same services, everything like that. So chances are Brockton's going to have so many more kids that they're still gonna retain lots of things in-house because it saves them money to do it in-house as opposed to go out of district. So I don't know that you'll get sort of, what happens a lot of times is we place children who it doesn't make sense to run a classroom because there's few children or their needs are different, and so there, there needs to be added things that we can't do in one. And so then you're tending to say, okay, everybody in the district, does everybody have children like this? Okay, now you have enough for a classroom. And the district does the classroom, the, the, the collaborative does that.
Well, and I can shed light in, in thinking about your question, does that reduced rate really lure more business? In the financial report that we were given in the most recent board meeting, Reed's is still one of the, the mo, the least expensive placements of the collaboratives. So it isn't a high price tag to begin with comparatively speaking. There are other collaboratives that are significantly more expensive. So, and that, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know that it's really a decision that's made based on finance so much as it is made based on programming. And I do think districts, one of the reasons that I, that I think enrollment is declining is not about Reed's at all. It's about the fact that many school districts, much like Middle, much like Middleborough, have now created programming and opportunities within our walls. We, we realize it is more cost effective to build programs and retain students, not to mention that it offers students that least restrictive environment in which to learn. So I think many, many districts are, are working very hard and allocating district dollars to that exact purpose. I think that's what's driving down enrollment more than anything else.
But in terms of the placements at Reed's, the students benefit from having peers that they can work with. So if having a larger population of school districts that are part of the collaborative means the students are more likely to have peers, then that benefits the Middleborough students who are part of the program. So I think that's an important consideration as well.
There are pieces that concern me about this. One is obviously the drop in revenue, as the superintendent said. Two was the other piece about bigger districts tend to put more students in, and it tends to happen. There's, there's a third piece too, which is this, is when you have collaboratives, collaboratives don't always have the space for the classrooms that they're running at all times. I've seen collaboratives take space in other school systems to run a, for example, a Reed's collaborative program there. If you were to look at that and that were to happen, what school system has the most space? That would be Brockton. So it would be an added bonus for us to have to transport students, to pay for transportation to Brockton. Right now, the way Reed's is set up, we're transporting students to Middleborough for the most part. So, so there's that potential too. So I just raise that concern for everybody to know that it's not, in my mind, this is not as, like, this is not a slam dunk choice one way or another in my, my estimation, that's all.
Well, and actually, I'm glad you brought up this issue about rental for space. So the Reed's Collaborative, the new building here in town, is Reed's Academy, which houses all grade levels, but only for Reed's Academy. The Reed's Deaf and Hard of Hearing programming, the DHH programming, is housed in the Norton Public Schools. Now, I can tell you that the Norton Public Schools is also experiencing enrollment increases and there is some concern that Norton is not going to continue to be able to house the, the programming there, which has been housed there for a very long period of time. It, once upon a time was here in Middleborough as well. So, um, many, many years ago. Currently, both Norton and Reed's have agreed to one year. So for another year, there will not be a space issue. But starting the following year will be. And to Chairman Young's point, they've, you know, the Reed's has already approached Middleborough to say, is there space? And I don't forecast having space for additional programming. We are already experiencing our own enrollment increases. And we just don't, we don't have that kind of available. Having a community in Whitman Hansen, Whitman Hansen's a regional school district. But, so more buildings and arguably more space, and same with Brockton Public Schools. That, that could be very helpful to the Reed's Collaborative, should they no longer be able to house the DHH program in Norton. So it's something to just consider.
Did you get a sense, I mean, you said it was a unanimous vote to allow them, it was kind of the sense of the, the Reed's board in why they felt that it was a good decision to bring in the other districts?
So a couple of notes. The board is made up of superintendents with a cross-section across the region. It includes urban districts like Taunton, districts like Middleborough, Carver, there's a bunch of us sitting at the table. In order for it to come to this level, the decision had to be unanimous. But I will tell you, it was unanimous, so that, so nobody on the board felt like it was appropriate to say no to this option. We really wanted to hear from our own school committees on that. That said, you know, I think it is a school committee decision and, you know, what, I can tell you how people voted. I can't necessarily tell you what each individual member, you know, thinks about it.
Other questions? Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved?
To, which way would you like to?
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
The way the piece of paper says.
The way the piece of paper says, yeah.
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
I would, I would make a motion to approve, yes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes no. So it's three to one. Thank you. So passes. Chair wants to entertain a motion to allow the chair to sign the agreement.
Yes, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So I'll sign that for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. While you're signing that, I will move on to the next item, which involves extended out-of-state field trips. This is something that the Middleborough Public Schools has engaged in for many, many years. Out-of-state extended trips, namely foreign language and band. But I'll start with foreign language or world language, rather. Offer students the opportunity to practice that language in a country where that is a language that's spoken by all. It's kind of hard to replicate absent that experience. Very strong curricular ties. It's a very positive experience. It's something that during COVID stopped for obvious reasons. There was a lot going on at that period of time. And, you know, there has been a request to come back to this practice of having these trips. Principal Brannigan and I have spoken about this a couple of times. I am very supportive of seeing experiences like this return to our students, particularly in the area of world language, for the reason I just stated. But not exclusively so, because our band has been able to travel and compete with other, you know, members of our country. And I think that that's an important thing to do. It's important to be able to go and see live theater and live music in venues outside of, you know, our home state. That said, when we stopped the practice of going to out-of-school trips, we ran into an issue involving reimbursement for what was really known as a catastrophic event. And Chairman Young and I have discussed the fact that, you know, before these trips come back online, we consulted with legal through the help of Principal Brannigan to draft some type of permission and release form. So that should something like that happen again, our families are, are clear upfront about what financially committing to an experience like this means and also takes care of a and also takes care of a couple of other pieces like travel insurance. So that families can make a sound financial decision and, you know, we can also mitigate our risk as a school district before we engage in these types of trips. So what I've presented to you is a permission and release form drafted by our legal counsel. And I'm looking for feedback. Do you have questions that I can bring back to counsel? Do you like this language? Are you concerned about this language? Is there anything that's missing that, that you have concerns about before we proceed?
And I apologize, I didn't realize this didn't drop in the Dropbox. So if no one has objections, I'll just move this to next meeting so you guys can take a look at it. You know, we ran into a problem last time. Paul was kind enough, I, I asked Paul to work with legal to come up with a waiver form. Again, this waiver form is, is for overnight extended trips. It's not for going to the zoo in Providence that we know kids go to. This is, this is for, the areas that I've seen it in the past is there's usually vacation travel for students doing something as part of a directed study. There's summer travel doing, for students doing something as part of a directed study. The music program has traveled in the past to a variety of different places and other countries. And I say that because it's been Canada. And there has been in the past a senior trip. So it's a little bit of everything. Did I miss anything, Paul? That's, that's about all.
Does this cover, I remember there was a, it used to be that, I think, I remember that Dani Duggan would bring students, I think overseas, I remember she went in England one time.
Right, that was part of, that was part of a, a trip and I forget the name of the company.
Right.
Dani was in charge of it through that company. In a lot of these ways, with, a lot of those other trips are not run by the schools. They're run by other companies that the teachers are taking on because it makes sense. There's, kids are taking a course in Greek history or mythology and then they go to Greece. Some are school related, the music trip, for example, is our band going on, on a trip. And then obviously there's the senior trip that's happened in the past. So it's a variety of pieces. It just seemed, we wanted to make sure that people understood that there was, obviously there could be a problem. And given what we've gone through in the past, people had to lay it out for people in a different way.
So in terms of the language here, the questions that I have are predominantly around what are labeled items one, two, and three. Are those new language or is that existing language?
This whole release is new.
Didn't exist.
Right, we did not, we did not use a form like this in previous trips. So part of this is the practice of just tightening up our practice. Sadly, when you go through an adverse experience, you learn about things that would have been helpful to have had upfront. This is one of those examples. So none of, no portion of this existed before, this would be new.
So with that being said, to add a caveat that I 100% support bringing these programs back online and I don't want to do anything to delay because I know the longer you wait, the more the cost goes up to if there's any chance of any of these programs getting booked for this year. The more delay we have in approving this, the, the higher the cost to the students are going to be to approve it. So if there's, if this needs to be turfed to the next meeting, but we can potentially look at this as well as look at whatever might need to be approved for the next step to keep things moving along, I would support that. And my general points for items one, two, and three, are they too specific? In general, the release is relatively vague. So I would recommend like point one, say space will be secured on the next available transportation to the, you know, city of departure or to the close, you know, I don't want, if you decide to fly out of Providence because the flights are cheaper, I don't want it to not be covered. And if you decide you're all going to take a train to Nashville instead of take a flight, you know, the, the, the second point is any such transportation, so it's general. The first one's very specific. And then the same with number three, responsible for their arrival to whatever city they return to. I would just make point three more general to give more options for in case of need, getting a child back.
To your first point, I want to say that there is nothing going to happen this school year. Everything would happen either next school year or, for example, the one piece that I know has come down the pike is a summer trip after the next school year. So it's one of these essentially a historical trip or a, a literature trip that goes on during the summertime after school. So everything, nothing would start this year. Or primarily because they need time to plan for it and they need time to raise funds for it. And generally speaking, let's say we were to decide this next meeting. January, the, for example, the music trips all happened in April. So that's only a couple of months, that's not time to work everything out. The other trips happened over April vacation and/or summertime. Again, it's not a timeframe that's going to work out for kids saving money for those trips as it plays out. Because it's, part of it too is a, for lack of better terms, a year long way to pay in. So you're not paying upfront, you're paying some money every month. Having children attend several of these trips in different capacities, I've lived through it. So that's the piece I know.
So even if the possibility of a senior trip that wasn't quite as far away, it's, it's just too late in the year to, okay.
Sad, but reality.
So we're tabling this until?
We're going to table till next meeting. Because you just got this and I didn't realize that. So I want you to be able to take a look at it. And if any, my suggestion, the biggest thing about this for me is it's gone through legal. So if you have particular questions, if you could get them to me as soon as possible because I still want legal to work this out, if that makes sense.
For number two, when it talks about reimbursement, I know some of the international trips, they use like a, an outside company, which the families would go directly to. So, and they would have their own reimbursement policy. So this would be only for ones directly through Middleborough Public Schools.
Correct.
Just want to clarify that.
Okay, taking a couple of notes just for tonight. So I'll, I'll, if I speak with legal before next meeting, it's likely I will, I will give those, those notes to her and move on. So with that is my, I think I have one more item. I have one more item for tonight. There is no, by the way, there's no vote on this. Once the, we'll put it on the meeting for next agenda, but it's not of, it's not, we're not voting on it. You just tell me, right?
No, we'll need to vote on it because we'll need to add it to the, we'll need to add it to what, as part of the, everything that is sent out. So this will, this will happen.
Will be vote required, okay. I just want to make sure I have all that, okay. Now I'll move to the financial services update, which really involves just the issue of capital planning. As I've told you, capital planning requests were due in early November, I believe it was on November 3rd. I submitted three capital requests to the town manager. The town manager has reached out to say that he is considering holding off on capital until next fall meeting. So that would be fall of 2024, citing the tax rate setting process, you know, in, on a lack of availability of free cash. So his question to me was, you know, can, can the projects that you submitted wait until the capital process for next year? Now, a vote at town meeting on capital projects for the fall of 24 means projects wouldn't be underway until the spring of 2025. So this is where I'm looking for your guidance as to how you would like me to proceed. Let me know if you would like a review of the capital asks.
Yeah, can you go for the three capital asks?
Sure, there were three capital asks this year and I'll go over them in order of priority. Priority one is the pavement at the elementary complex. When I say elementary complex, I mean removing and replacing the pavement at the Mayflower side of both the Mary Kay Good and Henry B. Berkland schools. This is something I've heard from not just the administration and the principals of both buildings, but also families. And I also drive there myself, so I know exactly what the concerns are with the pavement. It's a substantially expensive project projected at about $435,000. So that was the capital planning ask number one. The second ask was for $300,000 of technology. And if you recall, during the sort of COVID period of time, when that, when that occurred, our district was one to one for technology grades six through 12. But we did not have technology K through five, or at least not one to one devices for each child. So something that happened with the use of ESSR funds was to onboard those devices. The problem with that is that devices do not live forever and we knew at the time that there would need to be some plan for replacement of those, specifically those Chromebooks that were purchased in grades K through five. Sean Cicliano, our technology director has, or excuse me, our chief technology officer, has come up with a long-term plan because this is going to be something that continues to, to be at issue. Basically, the request is split into chunks so that you're paying a little bit every year, so that there's never just hundreds of thousands of dollars. In this particular case, the ask was 300,000. And phasing in devices piece at a time rather than all, one, always having them go obsolete at the same time and two, having to have a budget that, that makes those big purchases every couple of years instead of spreading it out. That was ask number two. And finally, ask number three was for two new, it was 160,000 for two new 15 passenger wheelchair buses, which our fleet is aging for our specialized transportation department. The way that this works is that you have to surplus, you, you have to put, take buses off the road when they get to a certain point and you have to have a plan for renewal. Much like the technology, it's not a scenario that's affordable to just onboard six or seven pieces of equipment all at once, nor do you want that because they'll all, they'll all come out of service at the same time. So this is a periodic ask that previously every year we'd ask for two pieces of equipment. Last year I did not, so I renewed that request for this year. So those are the three asks. I will share that the Chrome, the Chromebooks are at a critical point because that, you know, once a, once a Chromebook has approached its useful life, it's quite challenging for a small child to navigate that. We're not looking to build frustration in children. So either way, that is something that would need to be addressed through our operating budget, if not through capital. So that said, those are the capital asks and I think I'm just looking for guidance on how to proceed with the town. You know, the town is the one who has the budget and I think it's important that we work collaboratively together on this.
So again, the town manager is saying that there will be no capital asks in this coming, in this coming town meeting. But I, again, I throw it out to the committee because it's a committee's decision what they ask for financially. I, I mean, we've worked well with the town. I understand if the town's saying something, we should probably listen to it and take heed in it and try to work within that. And I think hopefully we can work within it at the following town, the, the annual special town meeting, as I like to say. But I think I would, I would defer to the, to the town manager who's asked us to delay.
So if we delay asking, what of these three items? I mean, we've just basically said that if the Chromebooks don't work, we're going to have to find the budget to buy the replacements anyway.
How, how much?
Where, sorry, where is the, the end of life for the vans and, or the, the buses? And are they, I mean, I'm assuming we're asking to replace buses that are utilized now and if they hit end of life and can't be used, we still have to provide the transportation that's safe and accommodating for the needs. So where does that leave us with that 160K item?
Sure, the, it's a good question about the transportation equipment. What we would do is repair, seek to repair rather than take a bus out of service. That said, it really depends on what breaks on the, on, on the equipment. So it's hard to forecast, but our buses are regularly maintained. They go through regular maintenance for that reason. The goal is to not have, you know, the whole engine need to be rebuilt, which would be a very costly repair versus, you know, other more regular tires, brake pads, that sort of thing. So again, relatively unknown. I could get you an inventory of where the, where the fleet is. The fleet is, is aging. You know, I, I think that's something that we've talked about as a group. I think it's something we'll continue to talk about in budget subcommittee. Certainly along with technology. I will say that techno, the, the number of pieces of equipment of technology is concerning. Not that the buses aren't important, but you're talking one or two buses versus hundreds of devices and hundreds of devices offline at the same time is a very significant problem. Particularly when you factor in, you know, so many of our platforms are electronically based. So it's very impactful if, you know, ST math is not able to get up online because we don't have enough devices for the children to use them at elementary. This renewal plan is really targeting the elementary devices, elementary age students.
So it doesn't, it's not like we're at risk of in seven months, we know we can't use the buses anymore. It's the, we're trying to plan ahead for the buses.
And a phased in approach, right? So we would target the oldest buses or the buses in, you know, with the highest mileage and the greatest wear and tear and take those off the road as we onboard newest, the newest ones.
I think the same thing applies to computers too.
Yep.
You know, it isn't like everything goes kaput September 1st.
Right, right.
I appreciate, and I think this is part of what the budget subcommittee has to do, right? Is look at everything and make determinations about what, there probably needs to be some more money added to technology so they can buy some more Chromebooks and move some things around. It's just maybe not in the fashion that Sean would like to see. And I think that's reasonable and, you know, again, we're being told there's not money to fund capital improvement. It's not like we're, somebody's saying, don't fund out capital improvement because we have more important things.
Right.
We're just being told that there's not funding for capital improvement. So I think that's a, to me, that's a much different ask. Do you know what I mean? And that's my personal belief.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely unfortunate. And without the budget process being far enough in to know, you know, could we come up with a two thirds of the ask for the tech? Are we, what are we looking at in terms of meeting it? But I think what you're asking for guidance on today is do we push back to the town or do we accept that that's just the reality of where it is and, and try to see what we can do in the budget process?
A part of it has been, you know, we, we've worked well with the town to make sure we met the needs that they had and they've worked well to make sure they've met our needs. And so, you know, I think there's, we have to look at a wide variety of things and, and when it happens. I don't think, we haven't put a lot in on special town meetings in general. We tend to do it at regular town meetings, so maybe we need to look ahead and differently from this point on. That's all.
I will share that historic.
We try to deal with what we have to deal with at town meeting. And the real, the only thing that I can think of that we would normally do at special town meeting and that we'll have to do is occasionally we'll get bills after the, everything closes out and we have to deal with that because somebody sends us a bill two months late. We don't have a choice but to go to a special town meeting with that.
It's historically been hundreds of dollars, not thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars. That said, the, I believe the pool roof was the, was a capital funded project at the Henry B. Berkland. So I think the only other thing I'll say is we're, we're just about to start that budget process with the town. And while these capital projects are undoubtedly important, they represent a very, very small number compared to the budget conversation we're about to have, which represents a very, very large number. So I think that we can absolutely as a team work together and see how might we approach these, these particular asks and how, you know, is there another way to accomplish one or some of these? And, you know, through other, through other means or through our operational budget, looking at our overall expenses. We, we continue to have our internal budget meetings and we'll be going to the budget subcommittee and scheduling for January. So we are not far off, we're not late in the budget process. We're actually early this year, which is a good thing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I feel like it's only appropriate to take the info from the town at face value and to say, you know, until we do our due diligence with the budget and evaluate what options we have, I don't feel like it would be appropriate to push back on anything and to, to, you know, take it as the reality of where the town is right now and, and go through the budget process and see what could potentially be done.
Except that when is capital improvement money? Capital improvement need to be in earlier than? earlier than most, don't they?
Capital improvement, the asks?
The ask for capital improvement need to be in earlier than the budget itself.
Correct, typically. They, this year, they were due on November 3rd.
Right.
And the, and the budget, not yet.
So the capital improvements have already been submitted to the town?
Mm-hmm, they have them.
Okay, so the ask is essentially to retract them till the next town meeting, so that's a different ask. Do you see what I'm saying, Jess?
Because the town meeting to talk about capital planning is not the same town meeting that the budget is presented at?
It is, but, for example, if we're looking at, you can keep them in the capital improvement piece, that, selectmen don't have to put them on, they're not required to. But the point is, if you retract them, they're not going to be discussed until, to the special town meeting, that's, that's the point. That doesn't mean we can't find other ways to fund them.
Right.
If a, if a different thing were to come up, for example, a different grant, or anything like that, or, and a lot of grants we get, things change.
Yep.
And things are added in, or subtracted, that you can use it for, or can't use it for, so.
Well, and.
We used different grants for different things at different times, based on the rewarding the classification.
Well, and as I mentioned la, in the flash last Friday, MSBA used to have a program for repair, for certain capital expenditures, that during last year, and I think the year previous, was frozen for lack of funding, and they're, they're putting that back online. So that's one potential avenue. I participated in a webinar, and also had a conversation with Jim Hutchinson, Director of Facilities, to say, might this be an avenue? If there's money out there at the town, at the state level for capital improvement, that's another way to, to obtain funding for a larger-scale project. I was thinking about it for the Nichols Middle School roof, which is another, yet another. I, I do have a five-year capital plan that I'm happy to share with, with you, that Director Hutchinson plays a very large role in, you know, looking at the facilities. And quite honestly, it's something I think that we'd review, possibly with the, the possibility of looking at a tenure demographic study. The, the life of your buildings and the repair schedule, and the renewal schedule for all of those facilities is something that we should be regularly, at least yearly, talking about, so that you have an understanding of, okay, we have to afford this thing this year, this next big project next year, just so that you can space it out, because it's just not, it's not affordable for any town, that's not specific to Middleborough. Buildings are expensive, the cost to repair them, boilers, that's why these programs through MSBA exist.
So I guess I'm looking for if the committee's willing to put these on delay?
Yeah, I would be.
Yeah, same.
Okay, so, put them on delay for the time being.
I will communicate that to the town manager, thank you.
Okay.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So, for purpose of discussion, consent agenda includes fundraisers, it includes donations, there's a donation for the bullying presentation for the Family Resource Center and champion scholarships. We should point out, there is a donation from the Middleborough High School class of 1971 to fund construction of a large Adirondack chair for the high school, and a couple of the other businesses that we deal with, Ohio Pile and Shutterfly, and Approval Awards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Chair will point out, our next meeting is Thursday, December 21st, that'll be our last meeting of the year. With that, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you, everybody, and good night.